Okay, it's five thirty, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you for everybody that's here. I can't see anything but in the hallway. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to go over the meeting procedures. Public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please state your name, an address, and limit remarks to three minutes or less. I would expect the city employees request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor, and an individual in violation will be declared out of order. Andrew, could you provide us with an indication?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you for your guidance and wisdom as you make decisions that will impact our city, the citizens, the businesses, and the community overall. Yes, for your guidance and wisdom on all the decisions we made tonight.
I would like to read just the study by of the United States of America, a new republic for which it stands, one nation, a nation of
Roll call.
Lee.
What? Couldn't hear.
Miss Lee.
Here, here, wait, here.
Back in Stos.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Lucas.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Carmen. Rieker.
Here.
Austin Door.
Here. Alright, thank you. Open meetings act of current copy, open meetings act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers and the conference room. Before we get into the consent agenda, I would like that, Jim, could you come up here for a minute, please? Jim Hawks, would you be so kind as come into this room, please?
That's you?
That look a little surprised.
Surprise. If you could, yeah, because if you want to just come up to this podium or somewhere in there, I'll meet you here in a minute.
Alright.
Jim, it's been an honor to work with you over these years. We've talked about that many times. I have a proclamation that I would like to give this evening. It says, whereas Jim Hawks has served the community in many capacities, too numerous to mention herein, but the most prominent being city administrator for the city of North Platte. And whereas Jim has been highly respected member of the North Platte community, he has made significant improvements which has benefited all citizens of the North Platte, of North Platte in his position as city administrator. And whereas during the years, Jim has displayed complete dedication to the best interests of the community in working for the betterment of its economic, cultural, and aesthetics development. And whereas Jim has earned the respect and admiration and highest regard of those whom he came in contact, who he came in contact, and therefore, this community has been very blessed to have lived and learned from Jim's many hours of dedication and passion as a true public servant. Now therefore, I Dwight Livingston, by virtue of authority vested in me, as mayor of North Platte, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May sixth, twenty twenty, as Jim Hawks Day in North Platte, Nebraska, and would like to take this opportunity on behalf of citizens of North Platte, the city council, and myself to present Jim Hawks the key to the city of North Platte and wish him that every success in his future endeavors.
Thanks to everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to be able to serve our community and our people. I really mean it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We wish you the best on your next chapter.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Okay, well, wait a minute until he gets back to his chair.
He might have been grabbed several times in the hallway.
Okay. We'll begin with the consent agenda. All matters. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council will remain, however, remove an item from consent by request. Item number one, approved minutes of April twenty first, twenty twenty. Item number two, place on MLW reports of March twenty twenty. Place on file treasurer's report for March twenty twenty. Item number four, approved application by Aiden Enterprises LLC, DPA, Southern Longhorn Bar for a special designated license on June thirteenth, twenty twenty, from four P M. to one A M. at the DMM Event Center, five oh one East Walker Road, for a wedding reception. Item number five, send application mid-plains food and lodging, DPA's time saver number three and time saver number seven for a class D liquor license. Beer, wine, and distilled spirits off sale only, located at twelve twenty South Dewey Street and thirty-two twenty South Jeffer Street to Liquor Control Commission with no recommendation. Item number six, accept bids in a word contract to Delta Star of Lynchburg, Virginia for the purchase of one ten point zero M B A power transformer for the Augusta substation at seven point nine M B A power transformer for the Great Plains substation in the total amount of one million, two hundred nine thousand, forty-nine dollars. And item number seven, accept bids in a word contract to Paulson, Inc. of Cozad for paving the Centennial Park lot in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Item number eight, accept certificate of completion and schedule of benefits for Water Connection District number twenty-one, East Sixteenth Street from Taff to Bryan Avenue, and set Board of Equalization for May nineteenth, twenty twenty.
I moved.
I got it. Okay, go ahead. You go first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask for number three and number seven to come up with that agenda.
I was gonna ask the same as number seven, default.
I moved the approved items one, two, four, five, six, and eight of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's no quicker.
Roll call.
We didn't hear you.
Miss Lee.
Aye.
Back in Stos.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Carmen. Rieker.
Aye.
Austin Door.
Aye. Motion passes. Alright, item number three. Place on file treasurer's report for March twenty twenty.
I guess I just wanted to ask generally what the city's starting to feel in terms of revenue loss from sales tax and various items. As I look at our revenue budget, it looks to me like there's maybe twelve of the thirty-two million dollars at a minimum of categories that would be naturally affected by what's going on with the reduction of revenue going on in the general economy. And so I just wanted to see what, how you guys are seeing loss of revenue at this point? Any budget alterations that are being made or plans for further budget discussions, that type of thing?
Jim, can you answer that? I know we have not received any information and probably won't until probably late May or maybe first part of June. Would that be a correct statement?
Yeah, with the two-month lag in sales tax, which is what I usually use as one of the primary indicators. As you say, like, we probably won't know until June. You know, one of the things that we put out there is, is that, you know, not to fill any unfilled positions until they visit with the city administrator and, you know, those kinds of things. We've also told the department heads in the last staff meeting that, you know, to watch their spending. But I guess, you know, the obvious things that were gonna be out is the occupation tax on lodging, which goes to the spike. Angie just put out the spreadsheet on it the other day, and it's down quite a bit. Of course, Keno's been closed here since whenever the establishments that have the Keno in it closed down. So anyway, Ty, I guess, I don't really have a way at this point to put a number on that, but I know that Matt and I have discussed that and some of the things that we need to be watching to do that. So Matt, go ahead. I'll. You got anything to add?
Mayor Livingston, Jim, I do not have anything for.
Thank you. You know, with some of the data out there that we're starting to see, I know that the Buckston service at the Chamber utilizes, ran a cellphone, runs a cellphone ping analysis. And I know Gary or Cassie could talk more intelligently about that, but to give you some ideas, if you take a week, this was in April, in mid-April, and you compare it back to a year ago, they had building, in building materials, we were actually up a little bit. General merchandise was about a forty-seven percent decrease. Travel accommodations was about a sixty percent decrease, and food service was about a fifty percent decrease. So just to show you some rough numbers, I mean, business owners right now aren't waiting to see how much revenue they lose. They're projecting how much revenue they lose, starting to try to make those adjustments as quickly as they can to try to prevent operating losses. And if we figure a third of our businesses were highly affected, a third were just moderately affected, a third were just modestly affected, and you ran some some very, very conservative calculations on revenue decrease, you know, we could easily see a million to a million-two in just sales tax alone over just a next three to four month period. And so I guess my suggestion is, is that as data's coming in, for example, the the occupation tax on hotels just came in over the last couple of days, March was down what, about forty percent? And so if you double that, because March was half affected, you're down about eighty percent. So I think we're just starting to get some data to where we really need to look at having a budget session or a budget adjustment session or discussion on alterations to budget, I guess, is my recommendation. I understand it's probably hard to do that until you start to see where the numbers are coming, but I think we're just to the point of getting enough data where I'd like to see us have some type of budget adjustment session with council, you know, over the next month, if there possibly be my request.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, we approve the treasurer's report, March twenty twenty.
Say it again.
Miss Lee.
Aye.
Back in Stos.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Carmen. Rieker.
Aye.
Austin Door.
Aye. That motion passes. Alright, item number seven. That is accept bids and award contract to Paulson, Inc. of Cozad for paving the Centennial Park lot in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, five ninety-nine point nine seven or ninety-seven cents and authorize the mayor to sign that contract.
We might be speaking of the same thing, but I just needed a clarification on this as we're awarding a bid for us to pave the parking lot. But down below on the discussion, it says that Great Plains Regional Medical Center approached the city to have, and have agreed to pay for the paving of the parking lot. The city will contribute rough rating and some removal. Staff recommends that the award be contingent on successful formal agreement with Great Plains. I'm a little confused here. Are we paving it? Are they paving it?
Paulson's is paving, Great Plains is paying for it.
Okay, that's, that's the clarification I wanted.
Jim, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Dwight. A hospital approached us here probably a month or two ago about paving that parking lot here in Centennial Park where there are student nurses and their nurses park to try and get them out away from the gazebo area there. We agreed to do that. We told them that we would design it, we would engineer it, we would let the contract and then supervise the construction on it. But, you know, and I think Terry put together an M O U. with us and the hospital so that the hospital would pay the contractor directly so that we didn't have to use our budget authority in order to do that. And I think Terry, you told me that you delivered that to Mel yesterday or today?
That's correct. And also Tom Ribble suggested ten percent fee for the city to do exactly those tasks that you mentioned.
Right.
Design, engineer, and administration of the building. And that's included in the contract as well.
Is this the parking lot that's the bigger one that would be right between the soccer fields? That, is that the parking lot we're referring to? Not the one right next to the gazebo, but the larger, larger one?
No, it's the one by the gazebo, I think.
Right.
It's north, south of it.
Okay. It's south. There's one they built when they put in the new soccer fields.
Right.
Do you foresee any type of issues that would cause if the city ever wanted to do something alternatively with that particular property? So if we enter into this agreement with hospital, which by the way, I think's wonderful, because the soccer fans will get great benefit of that, too. I've been a soccer fan. I know how bumpy that parking lot is and how muddy it gets. But we'll, let's say, for example, that through the recreational center planning or expansion or baseball field expansion, we wanted to do something with that property, will we, will the hospital maintain some kind of easement or formal rights to that property or?
That's not part of the agreement that I prepared. And private entity or any entity cannot acquire by way of adverse possession any rights against the sovereign, sovereign in this case against the city. So the fact that they use it for something else, there won't be any formal easement. There's no, nothing else of record. So no, I don't see any impediment to change anything.
And Ty, I might add to that, that in my discussions with the hospital administration, they had asked for something like that, and I told them where it was a public parking lot in a park, there was no way that we could make that exclusive to them. And so as Terry explained, there are no strings attached to that. Can I ask, bigger than me, if I could speak up just a little bit? I can't hear you here.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
No.
Okay, roll call.
Miss Lee.
Aye. I don't think we had a motion.
Yes.
Um.
Oh, no, we need a motion. Most of the approved accept bids in a word contract to Paulson, Inc. of Cozad for paving in the Centennial Park lot in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars, ninety-seven cents, not for the mayor to sign contract.
Okay, now roll call.
Miss Lee.
Aye.
Back in Stos.
Aye.
Peterson.
Here. Aye.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Carmen. Rieker.
Aye.
Austin Door.
Aye. And that motion passes. Alright, regular agenda. Item number nine. Approved Quality Growth Fund Citizens Advisory Committee application to fund a hundred and fifty thousand dollar request for the North Platte Area Chamber and Development Corporation regarding the gift card program that would infuse much-needed spending capital into participating businesses.
Gary Pearson, President of North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation. Thank you, Mayor, council, staff. Just a couple of quick housekeeping details before I ask the applicants to come here and explain the next two agenda items, but I want to echo your sentiments and statements about Jim Hawks, Mayor. Been a wonderful partner to work with in our chamber and development world, and we're gonna miss him a lot, and certainly thank him for all of his great service to this community. I'd like to welcome Mr. Kevin to the community and look forward to working with him as well. So as it relates to Quality Growth Fund, you know, recently came before you to ask for a matching grant for an application to do a planning study and some environmental studies on a proposed rail park for Lincoln County in the North Platte area. Happy to report to you that that grant was successful. It has been approved by Nebraska Public Power District, so we have two formal things. We have to get under contract by June fifteenth, and then we'll be able to start the process. So that was a very welcomed announcement by M P P D. Also, as you know, earlier in the year, we were going to have an annual report on the Quality Growth Fund, talk about the election process that we have to go through this upcoming year and with the sent an email request to the mayor, and if we could possibly do that, if the council area is able to get reopened and we can have a larger gathering here, I'd like to do that at one of your June regular meetings just to get the most bang for the buck and most mileage out of trying to present not only the annual report, but to kind of discuss what Quality Growth Fund and L B eight forty process is all about and why it's so critical to the community. The next two applications that you're gonna consider tonight were both unanimously recommended for approval by the Quality Growth Fund Committee recently. And I'll let Cassie Condon from our staff talk about the first gen item and then the the owners of Big Eye Spinner Bates and their banker are here to talk about their application. Thank you, and I'll be out in the hallway in case you have any questions.
Hello. Okay, so I'm Cassie Condon with the North Platte Area Chamber and Development Corporation. Can the other room hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. So originally, we had came to the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Review Committee with a request of a hundred thousand dollars from the S B A Technical Assistance Grant for a business gift card boost program. This program initiated with the idea, we had seen a couple other Chamber and Economic Development Councils across the state doing a similar dollar-for-dollar gift card match program. And some area businesses had came to us as a Chamber and Development Corporation, asking if we could initiate a similar program here. So we started our research and thought about doing something similar. So we approached the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Review Committee with an ask of a hundred thousand dollars from that technical assistant grant. And they thought that it would be available to use a hundred and fifty thousand. So they have made the recommendation to use a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that S B A Technical Assistant Grant and a cap for individual businesses to use, to apply for fifteen hundred dollars each. I have had Renee pass out a couple pieces of paper to each of you. The first one would be a flyer that businesses could download and use to promote the program. And then the second is a frequently asked questions for consumers and businesses. And so this is where we would really need your help. Should you approve this program, fine-tuning the fine details, the guidelines, and terms of a program? So we would need to really decide what following sectors would be able to participate in the program. Because a lot of businesses have called the Chamber and Development Office since the Quality Growth Fund Committee reviewed this program, asking if they would be able to be a participant. And we've received a lot of calls. And so the following sectors are what we thought would be best to be involved. Retail, restaurants, salons and beauty parlors, dog groomers, tire and auto shops, photographers, and pharmacies. Some other ones that have come into question would be convenience stores. And then recently today, we had individual hairstylists who are booth renters or self-employed businesses who are actually separate from a beauty salon. So they would rent out specific space so they don't fall under a salon. They're self-employed. So they were wondering if they would qualify themselves under this program. So that would be the first question under this program. The second question would be how long the program would need to run? Would it run until the funds expire, or would we have it run for a set amount of time? Ten days, thirty days? That would be something the city council would need to decide. Phelps County, which is around the Holdridge area, ran this program, and they had sixty-three businesses participate. They went through fifty-two thousand dollars in ten days. And then the following question there on the Q and A is if we need to set a limit to how many, how much the maximum gift card could be to per reimbursement. So this was a question we had from a city council member, and I don't know. Andrew, you want to talk about that anymore? I'll open it up for questions here.
I can say what my thought process on that was is you, to me, with the gift cards, what you want is you want to get most amount of people going to those businesses, and you don't want somebody going in there and buying five hundred dollars because it's their favorite store. You want to try to spread some of that wealth amount, so hopefully a lot of people go. Maybe they want to buy a bunch of different gift cards and or they use their gift card up, but you want them to also try to use cash on the back end of it. You know, they buy enough. You know, let's say you're going into a restaurant, they buy a twenty-five dollar gift card or a thirty or forty or fifty dollar gift card. You have a family. Well, it's a sixty dollar thing, and they spend ten dollars in cash as well. So it just kind of helps make sure you're getting a lot of people going to those, as opposed to just, you know, a few people buying up a couple of gift cards and taking up the cap for that business if you keep a cap of fifteen hundred dollars, which probably should. So I just kind of always thought that maybe somewhere right around a hundred dollar cap per gift card would be appropriate towards, to make sure that, you know, there's at least fifteen people going to that business and not just one or two.
I think that's a good idea. A little update for the council on how the federal assistance is going, because I think that kind of ties into this a little bit. Cassie, is it right that the, from the chamber perspective, you guys are looking at that we're not gonna use near the two fifty because of the migrations of the S B A program, and so are you guys proposing that, that the money tag for this would untag money for that and it would stay under that same two fifty allotment?
Correct.
A little update on that federal program is that the federal government ended up putting tremendous, back when we made that decision, we knew what the federal government was looking at, but we didn't exactly know how all that was gonna roll out, what was gonna happen. Well, the government put tremendous effort in the paycheck protection program, which they pushed out through the banks, and they included a technical assistance component in that. So the technical assistance need wasn't near as significant as we expected it to be at that point. Now what you're gonna see is the economic injury applications processing and processing more. They just opened that portal back up, I think, yesterday. But I reached out to Gary and guys to talk a little bit about this. We can't, I, we think that what a forty or fifty thousand dollar need is probably going to meet the needs of the community on that. And even from the time the Quality Growth Fund Review Committee looked at this, I think there's more clarity to that than there was at that time. And so one way the council, I think, could look at this is, hey, we've tagged two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the small businesses in North Platte from the Sales Tax Economic Development Fund. Why don't we allocate the rest of that two fifty to a program like this? Or you could view it more separately and look at the recommendation that the Quality Growth Fund Committee. I tend to feel pretty comfortable with keeping that total allocation where we, where we had it, but I could understand that either way.
One other question. Cassie, did you guys decide that gas stations and things like that would fall under, with their convenience stores would fall under resale?
I think you need to clearly define if convenience stores would be included and list them as a participating sector.
Yeah, because I'm seeing that could be a pretty big need for a lot of people.
Could we give the chamber that discretion? I mean, it is gonna be hard to project every industry this can contact you guys. Do you feel that that needs to come in a decision from the council? Do you feel that that needs to come in a decision from the council? Or do you guys feel that the chamber could administer qualified industries?
I, I feel like if that needs to be in your motion, then, then you guys need to decide that within your guys', within the city council yourself, if you're fine with us deciding that. I think Gary would say that would be fine, but that needs to come from your guys' motion.
But you're willing to do it if we thought that would be that.
Yeah, I will tell you that, I will tell you that we have received quite a few off-the-wall calls that we know would not qualify. But there have been a few that were like, okay, it needs to be set and decided upon before we roll out the program. If it's like the convenience stores or the individual hairstylists that we felt it needed to be brought up to the city council beforehand.
Another question real quick. You said we need to kind of figure out a timeline on this for you guys. Is, you know, two weeks enough? Is that not enough? Three, you know, say one month, 30 days or until funds run out? I mean, something like that appropriate?
We had honestly thought about a 30-day timeline. Depends on how much is allocated to the program. If Phelps County, you know, a community of 8,000 people went through $52,000 in 10 days, I'm looking at with just those sectors, about 190 businesses in North Platte.
You said 60 some down there?
63 businesses participated in Phelps County. Yeah. So I honestly don't see it lasting 30 days. I'm more concerned about the money running out faster than people can get their receipts turned in and then those not being able to participate.
Like a mad rush on the first day, several, and then one of them they sort of like.
Yeah, I don't want to be the SBA running out of money before people have a chance to get, but it's a possibility.
Your cap per business, I think, does a nice job of managing that. Is so, so I understand that if the cap was 1,500 as proposed, does that mean that if the business sold $1,500 worth of gift cards, let's say add $100 per gift card, like Andrew's idea, they sold 15 gift cards at $100 apiece, then they would get $1,500 worth of LBA 40 funds?
Correct.
And then they cap out at a certain point?
Correct. Yes.
I mean, I totally agree that we have to have a set date. Because you can always add on to it if you have to. Or if something happened that was wonderful and we reopen the city completely in two weeks, then if you went a month, we wouldn't need it that long. Correct?
Correct. Hopefully, a lot of these businesses will be opening May 11th.
Can hold you to it.
Hopefully.
Let me take a run at a motion unless you guys, the things you want to ask Cassie first. One other thing, you guys, you guys anticipate without us, if we don't put any kind of restriction on it in terms of, I'm just thinking here, that they, that they give away gift cards or 25 cents on the dollar on the gift card or something like that? Or does it have to be, say, on that receipt that they did, you know, $100 transaction per $100 gift card?
So I, we have the program set to there has to be a proof of sale or proof of purchase for their documentation of reimbursement.
But even if it said, you know, $10 and then they give out $100 gift card, they give them 10 cents on the dollar.
That's a good question. That's a good question.
Would, would it, in your opinion, would it make more sense to, to put some sort of, it sounds bad, but I mean, some sort of cap, whether or not giving them away for a penny so where they can take the money and run?
Yep.
I think it would better that it needs to be dollar-for-dollar. If, you know, part of the burden's on the business to engage the consumer. So if they want to sell a $50 gift card, they give them $60 worth of merchandise, that would be the way to do that. Because they need to show a proof that they spent, that they sold a $50 card and got the revenue from it and we reimburse them.
That's not, yeah, I just don't want, I just didn't want, I guess I'm discounting it all. And then, you know, like, oh, I want my money, here you go, Chamber, I got it for the purchase. So we just need to make sure we say dollar, dollar-for-dollar gift card match.
Right.
You want to do this, or do you want me to?
You know, I'll take a shot because I have a couple of things I think want to plug into, if that's okay?
Yes, please do.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the Quality Growth Fund Citizen Advisory Committee's application from the North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation regarding the gift card program that would infuse much-needed spending capital into participating businesses with, I want to put, using the remainder of the $250,000 small business allocation. Like to add that the industry, eligible industries would be at the discretion of the Chamber's management, that the qualified businesses would be within the two-mile jurisdiction or the city of North Platte. That we would have a $2,000 cap per eligible business, that the business would have to certify and provide adequate proof of a receipt of a dollar for every dollar given in the grant after the cap, that the funds would be utilized within the three months from the start of the program, and that there would be a cap on every gift card sold at $100.
We put on there for like a period of 30 days or until funds run out?
Yeah, I was just going to say length of the program would be?
You know, I, I had three months in there, but it, I mean, I'm certainly hoping, yeah, I did include three months in there, but I certainly opened it. I think we burned it a lot faster. You'll work it out 30 months, or three months, 30 months? I'd be happy to alter that if it's okay with everybody to, to two months.
Yeah, I mean, we should be mostly out of this, but we'll, we'll be out of the money, but I mean, hopefully we'll be out of most of the problem. And hopefully.
Okay. Second.
Don, did you get all that?
I don't know if I want to have to repeat it.
No. We can't hear you, Don.
I believe that I do have his main points down. And then I know that we, previously, we referenced the actual film also, and I will slow that down and be able to get that verbatim at that point.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Don.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Don, can you take care of roll call for us?
Yes.
Aye.
Back and Stoves?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Harmon? Reacher?
Aye.
Austin Door?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Gary, Cassie, you did great. Thank you. All right, item number 10. Approved Quality Growth Fund Citizen Advisory Committee's application to fund a $50,400 loan request on a 10-year repayment plan at 3% interest for Big Eyes Spinnerbaits of Sutherland, Nebraska.
I move that we approve the Quality Growth Fund Citizen Advisory Committee's application to fund a $50,400 loan request on the 10-year repayment plan at 3% interest for Big Eyes Spinnerbaits of Sutherland, Nebraska.
Okay. Did you wish to speak on that? I'm assuming, come on in. If you'd be so kind as give your name and your address, please.
Okay. My name's Shawna Cooper, and I'm from 300 London Street in Sutherland, Nebraska. I wrote a little something just for you guys, just so you kind of knew the reason why we came to North Platte to help get a loan for our project that we've been working on. So do you want me to go ahead and read that then?
Sure.
Okay. Well, we started our business in October of 2011 in our garage because Jason couldn't find the heavy spinner baits he was wanting, so he decided to make them himself. Once we started to make them, other fishermen realized what great quality they were and wanted to have them themselves. We added top brand crank baits to the addition of our spinner baits and outgrew our garage. And now we, and then we moved down to the highway there in Sutherland. We have a website where we sell our products all over the US, Canada, recently have an order from Finland. Jason is a well-known tournament fisherman in Nebraska, so along with his friend Fisherman, we were able to get our name out all over the United States and our spinner baits in stores mostly around Lake McConaughey and other parts of Nebraska. We made the decision in the end of 2018 that we wanted to expand our business where we could market our product plus add hunting convenience and alcohol. We know that there are other businesses in our area that sell outdoor products, but Jason and our boys and our friends are avid fishermen and hunters. They know what the customers like and what will have those products in our store. We bought the land for the building in August of 2018 and have had a hard time getting a loan for the building. With this loan from the Quality Growth Fund, it will help us, it'll give us the money we need from Equable Bank to finish financing the rest of the project. We'll benefit, we will be benefiting the North Platte area with our project because we are using several businesses to build the project along with using Equable, Equable Bank. Dexon Concrete is one for the concrete and building, Lust Heating is for HVAC, Palo Windows and, well, Nobles for the walk-in cooler, and then we'll also be using a locksmith here from North Platte. We also know that we have people coming from all over the state of Nebraska plus surrounding states that already come to our store on the highway. So we know that possibly they'll be stopping here in North Platte for gas and groceries before they head on to Sutherland. And we already use a lot of businesses here in Sutherland or in North Platte also. So we know that that would be the reason why we want to come and get your guys' help. So that's it.
Isn't that how Cabello's got started?
Yeah, pretty much the same way.
I think I have just a brief technical question. And I don't even know who I'm asking. I might be asking Equable there here or Terry. But in the revolving loan fund guides, a couple of things that, that we've looked at in the past and that would pertain is, one of them, that note would require collateral, I'm assuming behind Equable Bank would be normal in this kind of situation. Okay. And then could we have Equable service, the secondary loan? I know that, that that's something that's in our plan, but hasn't been the custom of the city, but it's something I know will last after we, and Jim may have more thoughts on this too, but historically, the city was servicing these notes directly. And the plan contemplates the primary lender doing the servicing and probably having some type of participation agreement or something back to the, to the city, which I think is a really good idea to have a primary lender service these. So I wanted to see if we could include that as part of the, the procedure on it.
My reaction is what you're suggesting makes a lot of sense. So, yeah, we could do that.
Would the, would the primary motion need amended to have it ran that way? Okay. Let anybody else have any other questions or discussion, then I can approach that sometimes, right?
So with that, that would put us on the, no offense, if things go bad, you know, that puts us on the, what, to read down on the list in terms of, have they tried to redo? Right, second or third? Okay.
Yeah, in these, in these kind of gap financing transactions, the, I think the contemplated role of the revolving fund was that you'd be, you'd still have a collateral position, but you'd be behind the primary lender. Is Equable willing to service that secondary note?
I know he had a head nod. He affirmative.
We, we can trust them.
Yeah.
So did you want to make an amendment on that?
Yeah, I would just motion to amend the motion on the table that the, the promissory note would be serviced by the primary lender with up to a 25 basis point servicing spread, which, and, and would be secured as outlined in the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Aye.
Back and Stoves?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye. Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Harmon? Reacher?
Aye.
Austin Door?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Do a roll call on the main motion. Tell for the amendment.
Yes. Yes, please. Roll call, I'm sorry. Don?
Aye.
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye. Aye.
Harmon? Reacher?
Aye.
Austin Door?
Aye.
And that motion passes. All right. Now, item number 11. Public hearing and action on recommendation by the City of North Platte Planning Commission on an application by Mark and Pam Pope for a conditional use permit to allow a mother-in-law's quarters in an R4 dwelling district located at 2102 Rodeo Avenue and described as Lot 4, Block 2, lawyers subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Does anybody out there? Nope.
Just the applicants here.
Okay.
Motion for the public hearing?
Second. Roll call?
Missley?
Aye.
Back and Stoves?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Austin Door?
Aye.
This public hearing's been closed.
Now move that we adopt the recommendation by the City of North Platte Planning Commission on an application by Mark and Pam Pope for a conditional use permit to allow mother-in-law's quarters in an R4 dwelling district located at 2102 Rodeo Avenue and described at Lot 4, Block 2, lawyers subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
Roll call.
Missley?
Aye.
Back and Stoves?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Harmon? Reacher?
Aye.
Austin Door?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 12. City as Board of Equalization to approve assessment schedule for sanitary sewer extension district number 348 along East 6th Street, starting in 1813 East 6th Street and continuing west approximately 475 feet.
Move that we would approve this assessment schedule for sanitary sewer extension district number 348 along East 6th Street, starting 1813 East 6th Street and continuing west approximately 475 feet.
Second.
John, did you want to say something to this?
Yeah, I'd like to. Did they adjust anything on that at all? Do you know, or?
Well, first of all, would you please say your name and address?
John Erickson, 1708 East 6th Street, North Platte.
What was the question again, please?
I was wondering if they adjusted anything on the way the money goes for the concrete and de-watering and all that sort of thing.
I don't believe so. I think it's the same as it was two weeks ago. No adjustments have been made.
And?
Gary, did you check into that to see?
I did. This pertinent statute is, the city ordinance is 53073. The pertinent statute is bound at, starts at Storm Sewer Districts, starts at section 16, 672.01. And City as a Board of Equalization, the city council can review the schedule suggested by the city engineer, Tom Woodwell.
Who is no longer with you. Conveniently.
Here this evening. And I think Mr. Woodwell was very straightforward and.
Well, he has another, another business that's, works with the city, almost a conflict of interest, but regardless of that, let's just go ahead with this.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I reviewed the procedures for any errors, irregularities, or inequalities. I found no errors, no irregularities. The city did what it's supposed to do under the statute. And so far as inequalities, that's somewhat in the eye of the beholder. That's not the city engineers, that's the legal department of the city. And so far as inequalities, that's somewhat in the eye of the beholder, that's not the engineers, that's the legal department of the city council views their inequalities, that is something they could do, I did talk to everybody associated with it in the engineering department. And I talked to Jim Hogs, and never in his memory, in the last seventeen years at least, as the city declined to follow the procedures set forth by Tom, fairly eloquently in his last report to the council saying, this is how we've done it, this is how you do it. It may seem any, that it's excessive giving the value to your property and they sympathize with you.
Did you look at it? You looked at it, I know that.
I did look at it.
And what did you see?
Saw. I.
Your opinion, not a legal opinion, just your opinion.
What I saw, so it doesn't matter. What I saw is the same thing everybody else can see, there was a home, there was construction done, there was pavement done, and there was actual notice.
There was no notice, I received no notice. We received no notice, it was only read one time, we know that's wrong right off.
Well, there is.
Supposed to be read three times.
If your protest is valid, I think the other question that was raised since you want to get into it is whether or not you have standing, whether or not Laura Erickson has delegated any authority to you, you're not attorney, you're not licensed to appear on her behalf. We haven't seen any power of attorney delegating anyone else to appear or protest on her behalf. The lot in question is the widest piece of property approved by the district? And with large pieces of property comes large responsibility.
Which Mr. Steel, Mr. Steel asked for that, told me he was going to pay for it, now that's he say, he, or she says whatever.
Perhaps, or you may want to go back and talk to Mr. Steel, but the council really hasn't ever in its recent institutional knowledge.
In the first place, there's supposed to have been bids on that, and the foreman, the foreman from that company, Midland, when he came over, I went and talked to him, and he told me, said we were out there de-watering along the road that goes to, out to the Flying J Golf Course thing, I should say, that area out through there, and they just come and ask him, said we need to get that done, and just brought it in there. That's what he told me, he said, we were already here, so we just did it.
Well, I wasn't heard at the time, but I did go back and look at the engineering file. It was published notice, three published notices saying this is the bid that we intend to accept. That happened in August of twenty nineteen. There was obviously work being done, nobody, there is no indication of any protest.
If you're not notified, there's no way you can protest.
Well, the statute, again, I was not advised at the time, the city council at the last meeting suggested to the engineering department that from now on they send certified.
Well, exactly, but I'm a twenty-seven thousand dollar example, is that the idea?
The statute doesn't require, that's what I can't do.
Well, it's legal mumble jumble is what it amounts to, and you weren't, you weren't even in charge of it at that time, you weren't on the twelve thousand dollar a month ticket at that time, until you just took over.
You're right, that's what I'm right, and if you want someone to help you dissect the legal jumble, I would respectfully suggest you go hire an attorney.
Wait, this is one of those you can be right and broke at the same time, is that the idea? Mr. Steel, who proposed all this, wanted it in right now. He comes up, and then, less than a week ago, he calls me up, wants to know if I want to sell property, so if you put a little pressure on somebody, does that kind of help, and just, not with your legal opinion, just your opinion?
John, the way this works is I don't answer the question today, I give my legal advice to the city council.
Exactly right, and, and your legal advice would be telling, protecting the city, that that has to be read three times, not once. Correct.
My legal advice is I found no irregularities, no errors according to statutory scheme and the ordinance scheme, and the scheme provided, well, not really the law.
Is, is there, is there any one person in here would say that that was right? Not, not you, I'm talking about anybody on the council, would say that this is right for a three hundred thousand dollar property versus a thirty-nine thousand dollar property? When they asked for it, said they'd pay for it, won't affect you?
Perhaps, Mr. Erickson, I would respectfully suggest you go talk to Mr. Steel about it, I think that's where your grievance may lie, it doesn't lie with the city.
What am I going to do with him? You're the ones that are putting it to me. If the city would have put the sewer in, which if it would have been protested, the sewer department would have put it in, which is considerably cheaper, not over twenty-five dollars a foot. And it, well, let's, that's just the way it is. Because we weren't notified to protest it, and it was only read once, it should have been three times, in three chance, three chances, we might have had a chance to protest it.
Well, the bid letting, I did find three different notices and publications before the contract was settled. There were three, three times it was posted, in August of twenty nineteen.
This is just wrong. You know, it's, you're cleaning up somebody else's mess, is what it amounts to. Well, I know I'm right, I think you know I'm right.
No, I actually have to dispute the mess, because I stand by what the engineering department did. Mr. Warble acted honorably, he did what the statute required of him, he did what the city's always done, and so I have to dispute the word mess.
Right. Well, I don't know what else, I mean, this is just, this is all I can offer, you know, a hundred and nine foot of concrete, sixteen feet wide for an eight-inch pipe, I mean, come on, that's a seventeen thousand dollar bill. What do you mean, you don't know? It's, it's a matter of record, you have the record just right here, I have a copy of it.
Well, insofar as the amount of things, I think for Mr. Warble playing the house one few last two weeks ago, what is approved and stuff. The benefit doesn't run to the individual, you don't look at the property.
Exactly right, at the, right. Right, except he said they pay only if they cross a street or an alley. Some, you know, not a driveway that's a hundred and nine feet long, sixteen foot wide for an eight-inch pipe, I mean, come on.
Well, I understand your point, I was asked to look at irregularities or errors, I did not find. Inequalities, it's up to the city council, that's. But historically, it's never been done, otherwise every time, somewhat of a slippery slope, you want the city council, every time there's somebody that says my property isn't worth that much, assess it back to the rest of the rate player, rate payer.
Well, I don't think the concrete should be responsible for the city or the ratepayers, I think it should be responsible for the owner that requested it.
And that's, again, my suggestion to you, if you may or not.
When you vote on it, who's going to be stuck? If the city would have done it, had I been able to protest it and knew about it, if I would have been able to protest it, then they would have put it through, and what happens then? My wife worked for him for forty-six years, okay, what happens then is they put it by there, and they charged that rate of twenty-five dollars a foot. And it's assessed, if you sell the property, then, then you pay that amount. If you do it this way, it goes in, and it's the full amount, and they start in at fourteen percent interest if you don't pay it. Now, just that alone is enough to say, wait a minute here, something is not right.
Well, I think statutes and ordinance were probably, that's my.
Okay, so. So if I would file a suit against the city, is what I have to do, is what you're, what you want me to do, is that it?
Well, I'm not suggesting that at all.
Oh, I, I understand that. And it'll be over more than just that, but it's entirely, I mean, I don't know how anybody can sit here on this council and agree with this stuff. You know, we have people on this that's running for mayor, and you're going to agree with this kind of crap? I think maybe you should really think things over.
Thank you, John, I think you made your point, so we'll go ahead. It would seem to me if Mr. Steel said that he would pay for the concrete, it should have been done in writing. Did you get it, get that or did this?
How would I get that? I didn't know nothing about it. I mean, I know he works for the city, and it's the good old boys' club, I know how that works evidently, because this is what's going on here. You know, and if he does want me out of here, I have no problem, but pay me what it's worth, not try to stab me in the back to get it.
I believe we have a motion and a second.
Would you like roll call, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Missley? Missley?
I hear you, Don.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is just one of those tough situations, I, you know, you can't undo time, but you could have, you know, I think it was a series of circumstances just happened here, we've done this differently, but now things have gone different direction, we can't change it, so. As I understand Terry's opinion, I would have to hold on, I, we don't have any, we don't have any, uh, capital that really can be recorded in other words.
I guess I'm hoping, you know, we've had this discussion, I think, last time, at our last meeting a little bit, and I'm hoping that in the future we'll make some due diligence and attempts to make sure that the landowners are contacted, either whether that's with some type of a hand delivery and a written receipt or, or something, so that we don't have these types of problems crop up again. I, I understand that Mr. Erickson's concerned, that is a lot of money, and, uh, I, I don't know what we can do about it right now, but going forward, I would certainly hope that we make a more concerted effort to make sure that the people that are involved know that they're facing an assessment.
Continue roll call, please.
Missley?
He voted aye. I voted aye, Don.
Okay, Back and Stoves.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Harmon. Reeker.
Aye.
Austin Door.
Aye.
Item number thirteen. Second reading, action to approve ordinance number four zero three four, decree a clean energy assessment district to establish definitions to provide the financing administration collection to promote energy efficiency improvements and renewable systems.
Mayor Livingston, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please, thank you.
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Platte, Nebraska, to create a clean energy assessment district to establish definition, provide for plant, for the financing, administration, and collections to promote energy efficiency improvements and renewable energy systems, and to provide the effective date here of, and published in template form.
Thank you. Remove that we would approve ordinance number four thousand thirty-four on second reading.
Roll call.
Missley.
Aye.
Back and Stoves.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Harmon. Reeker.
Aye.
Austin Door.
Aye.
Item fourteen. Action on ordinance number four zero three five, decree paving district number eight thirty-five on Reed Avenue from Oak Street to Spruce Street, and Spruce Street from Reed Avenue to Philip Avenue in the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Mayor Livingston, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance for the creation of paving, paving district number eight thirty-five on Reed Avenue from Oak Street to Spruce Street, also Spruce Street from Reed Avenue to Philip Avenue in the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and ordering the construction of street improvement therein.
I would move that we approve ordinance number four thousand thirty-five on first reading.
Second.
Ask just a couple of quick questions. I wasn't able to go look up the estimated cost with the city clerk, what's the estimated cost of this particular project?
Jim, do you have that answer?
On there, or did he not, was he not able to make it?
He was here earlier.
What, what? Oh, I haven't seen him.
I saw him earlier before the meeting. Yeah.
He was on here, I can see.
Tom, can you hear, can you answer that question?
Were you asking me, Dwight?
I think Tom's online, how do we, uh?
I unmuted him.
Tom, can you hear us?
Oh, there he is.
I'll get just both my questions out one shot, I was just trying to remember the approximate cost, and was it on the one and six plan, those are my two questions.
Reed Street was not on the one and six year plan, and the reason it wasn't at the time, we didn't realize how bad a shape it was in, the street by went over to do some repairs. They swept the street and found that there was an awful lot of deterioration of the asphalt surface. Substantial deterioration, enough that it wasn't really repairable. So, Jim and I talked it over, and we went and looked at it and laned it too, and we felt like that was the best thing, was to propose to repave the street, and we still have some work to do to cor it, to see what it looks like underneath. If the asphalt's deteriorated or not underneath, that'll determine how much asphalt we're going to put on it, we'd like to just mill off two and a half foot two back and have, that would be the extent of our paving, but if it's really bad underneath, it may take seven inches asphalt to, to put it back, or maybe concreted, I don't, we don't know yet, so, so it's a little hard to say, there's about a thousand tons involved if it's two inch. And so that's going to run about a hundred grand, probably something like that. And then, and then if we get into sidewalks and ADA ramps, that last job we did added about thirty percent to cover that cost. So, there's some substantial expenses potentially with this job, yeah.
Is it, are the water table issues that have been known with some of the foundations in that area contributing to that?
Yes, absolutely, I, that's, I had a fellow, Willis Rothmeyer, told me they used to hunt ducks in that area. And the subgrade is terrible down in there, a lot of people in that area have fought with soft foundation, under, material underneath their foundations, and have had problems of cracking and displacement of their walls, et cetera, so I think we're suffering the same problems with that street.
Will, will that catch that intersection one to the south as well, it's in such bad condition? It'd be, I'm trying to remember the street, if you want, south of Reed.
On.
William, I think.
William and Union, probably, I think Lanes guys are planning to replace our concrete, because that's in pretty bad shape. William was also a street that we looked at, but we decided not to include that at this point in time in this project, because it's, it's not, it's showing deterioration also, so we have several streets around town that we know are going to become problems, and it's, it's kind of complicated because Western has pulled out, and they are gone now, they're, they moved back to, to, to the eastern part of the state, so we do have Kroll that produces asphalt. But our, our smaller asphalt contractors struggle price-wise to be competitive, so that's a concern, and we did talk to Paulson, Inc., and Cozad, because they do asphalt work, and they do have the county's contract for the next phase of the county's work, and they are willing to come in and work on some of our streets, but they need about a thousand tons to make it economical enough for them to come into town, so that's, uh, that's the basis we've covered so far on it.
Just out of curiosity, Tom, when we move something up to the one-year plan, what gets knocked off?
Well.
And how you decide what gets knocked off?
Yeah, you know, we have a public hearing in February typically, we just had those. You know, we have way more need than we have money, so it's. You know, we have way more need than we have money. So it's just whatever's the worst problem at the time is kind of how we address things. That's the best I can tell you, Jim. I mean, that's, we just pick and choose our battles.
The other thing with that actually is that, you know, we're doing this as a maintenance project, not a construction project, which makes a difference on how you would show that on the one and six also.
Yeah, that's true.
Just, just as a kind of a sore subject, I guess. I'm going to bring up Ninth Street. Somehow I can hunt ducks in town, but with the last rainfall, I'm sure there were some on the, on the ponds on Ninth Street. When it rains, the water routinely covers that street. I'm kind of at a loss as to understand why that street is never replaced or repaired and other streets in the community are. We have, we have lots of foot traffic on that street, even the, even the patrol, when they drive down the street, drive down the center of the street so that they don't have to run into the chuck holes and the potholes on the edges of the asphalt. And I guess, you know, my constituents up there need to have some streets repaired, replaced and repaired as well. And, excuse me, and that's one of the ones in our town is probably as bad as any of them.
You know, Ed, I wouldn't argue with you. There's a lot of places in town that have some bad surfaces and, and certainly the pedestrian traffic, et cetera. You know, you and I have talked about it before and it is on our one and six year road plan to do that street, to improve that section. But again, we have, you know, candidates and we have money to pay for the candidates we have. That's the best I can tell you. And I, you know, I guess.
Excuse me?
City council. And, you know, if you can talk to council and do it, that's who gives us our final orders, you know, to, to do something. We, we bring and read to you because we see a definite deterioration. It's the council's decision to move forward with it. It isn't ours as either administration or in the engineering department. We, we try to address what we feel as the most immediate need. And certainly I, I won't argue with one bit about Ninth Street. I'd love to do something up there and extend that cross section all the way over to Buffalo. But it'd be an expensive project because of the length mostly, but it, it certainly needs it. And I wouldn't argue with that.
I just wanted to bring that up, Tom. Not trying to cast aspersions on you.
No, I don't take it that way at all. Thank you.
What's the cost per se block on asphalt versus concrete right now?
Well, asphalt is probably eighty percent of the cost. It depends on depth and width and it depends on what kind of traffic, et cetera. But it's not as dramatic as it used to be. Probably used to be closer to forty percent, thirty percent, something like that. Asphalt would be thirty percent of the cost of concrete. It's not like that anymore. So that, but everything's expensive to do. It's just, we don't have as, we don't, can't stretch the dollars like we'd like to. And we do stretch them as much as we can, but, but it is, and, and, you know, we try to get contractors to come and bid our jobs. And sometimes they come in and sometimes they don't, so.
Did Judy go home?
I'm sorry.
I said, did Judy go? I was curious, would Ninth Street qualify under CBG whenever we get those funds again?
Yeah, yeah. We did a lot of work up in that quarter of the city under block grant money, you know, a number of streets up there that we've done eighteenth and, and I don't remember all of them. But there, that was one of our main areas that we, we did do a lot of block grant work at one time. And, but I don't think we got down to Ninth Street at all or in that area where Ninth Street is.
You guys were covering gravel roads, if I remember right. You were taking out gravel roads in place with, you know, hard surface.
Right, yeah, that's true.
And there's still a lot of gravel roads up on the north side of town.
Yeah, the last ones we did were over in H and G, if you recall those streets. And there's still E Street that's gravel going over to bicentennial.
There's plenty on the north side. There's some in, a little bit more free upon, by the tracks. And then there's some on the east side of town. But I just didn't know if that would qualify under CBG in order to, you know, if, if those funds are available, which they may or may not be.
Right.
You know.
Judy's a better, Judy Clark would be a better source of information.
That's awesome. She was still around somewhere.
But some, some of the problems, I know that they changed the right, the rules on how they administrate those. And a lot of it depends on the local people in that area organizing themselves and making an appeal and taking responsibility sort of to initiate the desire to have a street paved. And I, Judy can explain that better.
Are there any other state programs or federal programs that we need to look at in order to do repaving?
I know Judy.
Everybody needs to run, so.
Judy looks at those all the time. And I know she's in constant contact with the state to try to determine the best opportunity for us to apply and get funding. But I know she's on that all the time.
Outside of federal highways or roads bill, you know, infrastructure bill of some sort. I'm just, I'm saying there's some ways we can probably couple in order to take care of Ninth Street.
Yeah.
Which wouldn't qualify necessarily with this is.
Yeah.
Question, John?
Sure.
If you go in and you just said, or you think it would be about a two inch overlay for a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
If you go in there and do some core sampling and you come back and say, man, that'd be a waste of money and it's going to run two hundred thousand, you'd take another look at it.
Yeah, well, we, we have to do something with it because it's in such bad shape. So, but that's a good question, Glenn. We, I wish I could tell you for sure at this point that we know that it's only going to take a dozen. So we're optimistic that it could be just a two inch. And I know Jim, I know Jim's sentiment is that, that that's the way we're going to go if we can at all. And I'm sure that Matt would have the same sentiment. But we have to do what's appropriate. We don't want to throw good money after bad. And if it's bad subgrade, putting asphalt on top is probably the worst mistake we can make without fixing it underneath.
Is the sub infrastructure there good? The water, all the sewer line running problem?
You know, we always check with the, with the water department and sewer department, see if they have had problems. I think they've had a few breaks over there on that area, on water system.
So would they want to try to redo some of that at the same time then?
Well, they might, they might want to look at that, yeah. We'll have to ask them and.
I, I just thought we were not wanting something, redoing something and.
Right, right.
Holes in it and re.
No, that's a good point. That's a good question.
I just didn't know on that part.
We, we try to map that or make sure that we address those things. That's why we changed the water line out on Sixth Street and we'll do so on Dewey as well, to take the old main out of the system and replace it with new main before we do any street paving.
The one just quick comment I have, of course, this is Glenn and I's ward. This is as bad a street as we have in our ward. It's, I mean, just outside of the widening issues, it's in worse shape than Dixie because honestly, it's, it's in rough shape. But I'm sitting here concerned about losing minimum a million dollars and maybe as much as two or more in revenues that are coming in this year. I don't feel very comfortable moving something forward that wasn't on the one and six year plan. I guess I feel like maybe this should be reconsidered, either once we complete amended budgeting review or secondarily, next time we go through the one and six plans. But I think it's extremely appropriate that they brought it to us because this street is in bad shape. I mean, it really is.
It is in bad shape. I, but I always think of like the sewer line that we put in out south, you know, we, we can put it in this year for a hundred thousand, but you come back and we can patch it and then you come back in three years and there you go. And now it's three hundred thousand. So if it, if it needs to be done, I would say let's do it. But if it rotten clear to the bottom and you got to go in and do the whole thing, then that's a different story.
Would the council's sentiment be maybe that if we see the major, bigger problems that we should bring that back to you and talk about that budget situation? More specifically, I can relay that to Brent. Yeah, we can do that. Thank you.
So we're going to table it then?
No, you know, I don't believe we are.
Now, he's still vote on it and then we have the verbal agreement on the record, right? So.
So if he comes back to us and finds out that the core sample.
By the way, we told you a hundred thousand, it's going to be six hundred.
Yep. Then we cancel it.
Yeah.
I believe there is a motion on the floor or on the table in a second. So, Don, would you be so kind as to take roll call?
Miss Lee?
Hi.
Backenstoss?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Lucas?
Nay.
Lee?
Hi.
Farman? Reeker?
Nay.
Austin Door?
Hi.
Motion passes. Say, item number fifteen, approval of the contract for the city administrator's position between the city of North Platte and Matthew F. Piven. We may, if you want to ask questions, first, first out question, we will. But if you don't have questions about first out.
I move that we approve the contract for city administrator position between the city of North Platte and Matthew F. Piven, then retroactive to be for twenty twenty.
Roll call.
Miss Lee?
Hi.
Backenstoss?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Lucas?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
Farman? Reeker?
Hi.
Austin Door?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jim. Item number sixteen, claims.
Motion to defend a claim to pay the claim.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi.
Backenstoss?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Lucas?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
Farman? Reeker?
Hi.
Austin Door?
Hi.
That motion passes as well. Your motion to adjourn, the move. Second, roll call.
Miss Lee?
Hi.
Backenstoss?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Lucas?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
Farman? Reeker?
Hi.
Austin Door?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Horace, you here?